This conference will now be recorded.
If you're online, can you confirm you can hear us?
I can hear you. This is Rob.
Eric, can you hear us?
Yep.
I can't hear you, though. Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so it is 8:02. We're going to start this meeting. And everyone is present. Eric is virtual. Dave had something to add to the agenda. What was that?
Update.
We'll do it at the end. All right, so. In our government agreement, Grant County Digital update. Eric, do you want to take? Oh, we can have a pledge. Yes, I didn't put it on the agenda, but yes, we have a pledge. Sorry. Everyone, please write the pledge. All right. So Eric, do you want to take the lead on this one?
Okay, I'm assuming Nick Ducati is not online.
I don't see him yet, but he's supposed to be.
Okay, that's fine. So. Let me just get to the document. Stand by. Okay. So the document that's posted online. And just confirming you can hear me okay now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Is was put together by Nick Ducati, our contracted. Our contractor who is. Just about a week ago started looking into the EDA grant and the digital broadband project, the finance aspect. And how that has impacted the grant itself. So this is really just kind of a very, this is an update. This is really a first draft. There's, there's a lot more work to do as far as looking into this. But there's some, the background and caveats. The bottom line, what I want to point folks to is. On the budget implications piece, Fund 7-112 is the fund that's also, I believe, is also known as the IT fund. And that fund and. Rob, chime in because I think you, there was, there was one charge at least that wasn't charged appropriately and was, was. A charge for this project that was charged not to the IT fund and we moved that where it should be. And that put us at 118,469 overdrawn on that account. So what that means is. The three members of Grant County Digital are, you know, on the surface are responsible for that bill. If we were to dissolve today at this moment and not just dissolve, but decide we aren't going to move forward with the project, I should say. And and the way that's broken out in very rough terms is. The city, it was, it was agreed upon when the IGA was originally signed that upon dissolution that the earth, actually during the IGA when it was signed, not necessarily during dissolution, but that. All parties would be responsible for a percentage of the costs of this project. Based on their population. And so the way that played out on the, on the appendix for the IGA, I believe, is appendix on annex. Is Grant County was responsible for approximately 60% of the cost. City of John Day was responsible for 37% of the cost. And the city of Seneca is responsible for about 3% of the cost. And. So that's, that's, you know, you can do the math yourself. That, that's, that's the liability right now. So the liability for the city in particular for this 118 is going to be 37% of that or probably around $45,000 in that area. And, and Rob, I know you're online. If there's something important you need to chime in, feel free to interrupt me.
I'll, I'll jump in if you let me.
Go ahead.
The IT fund, I think, really is Grant County Digital's budget. I think that was the intent all along. It was funded with a significant multimillion dollar grant many, many years ago. And everything related to IT has been pushed through there. In Nick's letter, it shows that we've, in the current budget, there's already a deficit fund balance in there. And I can't see any revenue that has come in to that Fund 7 account right now so far this year. So any expenses charged to that would just be decreasing the fund balance further. Is that fair enough? Can I give everybody a?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. I'm just going to go back to the document here real quick. So there's, there's. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Did somebody have something to say?
No, you're good. Keep going.
Okay. So that, that's really the main, the main piece that I really wanted to point out. So when you look down again, a couple bullets down. LS Networks Comm Structure, currently LS Networks is, was doing work for Grant County Digital. Or AKA the city of John Day when it comes to paying the bill. And that work was related to planning and architecture, pre-construction type work. And one of the things that I did is. I called LS Networks and told them to stop all work, just, just to put a pause on it. And I received a reply from them and an update on the personnel who were working on the project. And they're standing by for further guidance. I told them it, it probably is going to be weeks before they hear from us. But so that work is stopped, although there are. They did tell me that there was one or two invoices that will be inbound that are for work that's pending. I don't know how much those will be, but that again will, as Rob pointed out, will contribute to the deficit on the IT fund. One of the things that we looked at potentially as, as a, as a match for the EDA grant. Was John Day's purchase of the planned Cyber Mill building at 241 West Main Street. And the purchase was, according to the report here, it looks like it was 90,000, just over $90,000. And that would have gone a long way to potentially offsetting because we could have been reimbursed for that at the city. And that could have offset the IT fund significantly. Unfortunately, the building was not purchased. Within the. The time window that allows it to be used for. A match. So what this means is. Yeah, go ahead.
So it was purchased in the time to get reimbursed, but there was an amendment made last year that removed the pre-award reimbursement ability.
Right, yeah. Thanks, thanks for that, that detail. That's, that's an important aspect because in August 22, the, the grant, the EDA grant was amended. And money was moved around in the budget for the grant. That precluded us from being able to use that building as a match. Which, you know, I, I can only speculate. That was, that was a thought at the time, but I just don't know. And we don't know yet either. Other costs, there's, I'm not sure, and Rob, you might be able to help me. Apparently, we, we owe Catalyst some money. And it may not be reimbursable. And I'm, I don't want to get into the details because I'm not a total expert on, on Nick's. Analysis there, but I don't know if you have anything, Rob, on that.
Yeah, so I think we don't owe them any money currently unless I'm unaware of some kind of bill. But, but we've paid them and we charged it to the, the fund that holds the grant.
Right, okay. Thanks for the correction on that. And there's an issue about whether or not they would be eligible. So if they're not eligible. For reimbursement, it means GC Digital as an organization would effectively have to eat those costs. And Rob, what were the costs on that?
Well, we had about 30,000, I think, to Catalyst and about 30,000 to LS Networks in the, in the invoices I was able to pull.
Okay. So, and is that, is that all computed into that 118 or is that in addition to?
So the 118, I'm not, that, the 118 I thought was the beginning fund balance, this negative. These are, these are. Some of those are current year charges and some of those were included in the 118. So it's a split.
Okay. Okay, so as we move forward.
Eric, I think there, Eric, I think there's been about 20,000 from LS Networks since May. So I think the total. Negative is a, is about 130 to 150, but Rob and I haven't been able to dig into the exact figures yet.
Right. Okay. Hey, Nick, I'm glad to see here. I didn't realize you'd popped in. I was looking at the document. So. Nick, do you want to? Move on from here? I think the rest of the stuff is, is probably stuff you can elaborate on a little better than I can.
Sure. You know, there was, there's a question in chat about charging it to the fund or the EDA grant. And I just want to say that the, the idea is that the, a lot of these charges would have been. Charged to the 07112 IT fund for the. And then the EDA fund would have come in and reimburse those expenses. So then there wouldn't have been. A deficit or such a deficit in that account. It looks like, Eric, you were kind of just going down my first page here. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
So right, to add the catalyst issue on whether they're ineligible. Reimbursable cost has to do with the type of procurement that was done for Catalyst and whether it was open and competitive. I haven't gotten a clear answer on that, but my. The initial answer I got was that it was not competitive and open. So most likely the Catalyst expenses are not an EDA eligible reimbursable expense.
And Nick, this is Jeremy. Can you, can you be more specific? Meaning that, that what happened in particular?
Well, I don't know exactly how Catalyst was procured. I had a short conversation with the board, with some of the GCD. Board members about that. That's one area I need to dig into a little further, but right now. I have yet to receive any information that would indicate they are in, Catalyst is an eligible expense to reimburse.
Okay.
Dan Becker is here with Grant County Digital. He can maybe speak on that piece. He just raised his hand that he can.
We went out for public. Contract on that position, the executive director and Catalyst was the only respondent.
Okay, Dan, if you could send. If you could send me all that procurement information, I can package it together and you might be able to get. EDA to reimburse it. The other question was a. Conflict of interest eligibility issue. I worked on two other EDA grants and wrote them. And because I wrote them, I am conflicted out from being paid by the grant. As a consultant. So on my other two EDA projects, I'm actually working outside of grant eligibility. I did bring up to the EDA that, you know, Nick Green wrote the application as city staff and then became a consultant. So he said. Richard Moore with EDA said he would run that up the chain to find out on those two points whether it would be an eligible cost. That's why Catalyst is in the maybe category, but I'll continue to, to run that down.
Eric, do you want to keep going down your paper?
Sure, just making sure there wasn't any questions. So Eric kind of commented on the pre-award costs. So to explain to everyone, the. Pre-award cost period is between April 2021 and April 2022. The ability to reimburse costs from that period was amended out of. The grant in August of 2022. So that. All that along with the architectural and engineering costs. Were amended out of the, the grant. So the implications there are that, as Eric said, the Cyber Mill building in John Day. Cannot be reimbursed because it was purchased in June of 21, which is within this pre-award period, which was removed from the grant. The same with LS Networks. And, and that was in part because the, you know, the EDA project simply took a long time to get. Moving and they had already hired LS Networks to start some of the plans and specs that they're working. Any questions there?
The August 2022 amendment.
With that, I couldn't quite hear your first part of the question.
authorize the August 2022 amendment?
What is it?
Who authorized it?
Who approved it?
Oh. I'm not sure. I have a. The memo that I saw from August was. A Nick Green memo that CC'd Quorum. He was the new consultant CFO at the time. I haven't tracked down like council and Grant County Digital minutes on the amendment yet.
Seems like that's for Jermaine to this discussion.
I don't have any information on who authorized the amendment. I just know who authored the memo.
I'll just add, Chris, I think that's a great question and it's certainly something that needs to be looked into. But it's going to, it's going to take some time to go through this. Nick's been working on this for probably just a little over a week now. So this is really just an update for the council on where we're at. I think we should add that to the question list.
So you're not expecting any. It's just discussion today?
Yes.
That's all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe, and if somebody else wants to correct me, I don't believe there's, we're, we're under any kind of timeline right now to have to make a decision today. And there is a lot to. There's an onion to peel back here that we're working on. And I think it's really important that the council has a little more information. Before they make a decision or consider a decision. And we've got the time to do it. So I think that's appropriate.
Okay, on your, on your memo here, you're talking about implications and not being able to fund and so forth. And you don't know all the information. How can you make those decisions if you don't have all the information ahead?
So, you know, knowing who authorized the memo has no, doesn't really have any sort of impact on. The finances of the project. So I started with the numbers. And. You know, Rob and I are pretty busy for you guys. So I, I spent a lot of nights and mornings working on this. To get you as much information as I could in the first week. I will continue to look into it if you guys have further questions, obviously. But, but yeah, a week was not enough time in the, I think, 30 hours I've spent on this in a week. To get all of the answers. I think the main problem is that there's, when I went to request money from EDA for costs that are coded to EDA. EDA said, nope, can't do that. And that started a long. Investigation into why and why there was no money available and no grants available to. Reimburse the city for these costs.
Any other questions?
You guys? Okay.
Dave's talking.
Go ahead, Nick, if you have anything else.
Do you want me to keep going or are there any more questions for there? Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, so Dave has a question for you.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
So you say you've only had about a week to be looking into this and it seems to me like there's. You know, a lot of missing pieces that you haven't been able to find or not sure where to look or. You know, whatever, whatever the deal is, you guys, you guys are investigating without a lot of information from the start. So when you finish. Addressing the council on this issue. The gentleman that started this project and has the most knowledge. Of it and how it's supposed to work and why. Is sitting in the audience and I would like him to. Add some information that can possibly help you finish. What you're doing.
Sure, that'd be great.
Mr. Green's in the audience. He's already agreed to speak on this. He was allowed to. I would like to insist to be, be allowed to speak on this because I think he could clear up. That's all I have to say right now.
I also want to add, I looked through the minutes. Grant County Digital Board meeting on August 16, 2022, and it does not say in the meeting minutes. Approved, it just talks about the.
And I'll just clear up that, you know, I was asked to provide this information at this time. I'm just trying to be helpful with what I have found, so.
Yeah, so that's why this is coming more so because right now all of that money is being paid for to date out of our general fund because we cannot. Be reimbursed, so it had to come out of something. It can't be put in the IT fund. So. And then you want to keep going and then we'll let Nick Green speak and then we can keep discussing this? Nick, are you there?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't know you wanted me to keep going. So the other. Really, the other big thing is. You know, there were some funds that were discussed in, in May through a resolution that. The city and Grant County Digital would make a joint application for three different funding sources. And one of those funding sources is the one that is listed in the current budget. I believe it's the Oregon Broadband BTAP for 145,000. So my understanding is none of these grants have been awarded to the city yet. The Ford family, I believe, the application has been made, discussions have been had, but they're waiting for some more. Firm information from the city and Grant County Digital. And the Ford family money is contingent on the John Day Cyber Mill part, part of the project. So that will be something. The council needs to determine before we kind of finalize that funding. The Oregon Broadband Office applications are not out yet for technical assistance. The USDA broadband technical assistance was a June 2023 deadline and my understanding is no application was submitted for that. The Grant County Digital folks thought there might be some DAS money left from the HB 5006 bill. I looked into that. And it appears from the reports Grant County Digital gave, those funds were expended at the end of fiscal year 2022. So then kind of my caveat on new funding in general is that. You know, as it relates to the existing deficit is that. That new grants are not going to pay for costs two years into the past. Sometimes you can use those past costs as match to leverage more funding. For more project, but ultimately the situation the city is in is needing cash. To pay for some of these incurred costs. We don't necessarily need a bigger project eventually, you know, kind of my initial issue to sort out was. How to pay for these costs now. And, you know, especially the building purchase and the costs associated with that from back in 2021. And right now I don't, I don't see a feasible way to get more grants to pay cash for costs two and a half years ago. So the gist of it is, you know, trying to run down to what exactly the, the gap in, in funding is between, you know, where. Grant County Digital and this EDA project needs to be at the end of the project. And, you know, the deficit we have now, the money we need to complete that project creates, you know, your total gap slash deficit. And we still have $216,000 that is required as a match for the EDA money. So that has to come from somewhere. So you, in my mind, you add the deficit. Of all of the costs that are not grant eligible, you add that to the match requirements because. We won't be able to use LS Networks or the building purchase anymore as part of that match. So we have to find additional. Additional funds on top of any funds that might close the deficit or close the gap. Have to find additional funds to pay for that match in the future. That's the gist of my memo. In about 10 minutes, I gotta start driving towards Umatilla, but I'll be on the phone.
Okay, so at this time, I'll have Nick Green speak on this stuff and then council can talk and then we'll move on. Thank you for your update and I appreciate your time spent on this to try to sort it all out.
Yep.
Thanks for that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I can keep this pretty concise. Unfortunately, a lot of assumptions you've drawn here are just factually incorrect. So I'm going to set the record straight.
I can't, hey, Nick, I, I can't hardly hear you. Could you move towards the microphone?
I can actually get closer to the microphone, Eric. That's just, you know, zits on my face, but can you guys at the table hear me?
Yes, we.
All right, good enough for me. Your purchase of the building is documented elsewhere in the special awards conditions, has nothing to do with SAC 22. So the inference that Mr. Ducati is making. That those pre-agreement costs don't apply to the building is not correct. And I'm not blaming Nick. Nick's an Egyptologist right now trying to decipher, you know, decipher hieroglyphs because he wasn't there. I was. And I've spoken with Richard Hammer. More about this at EDA. We talked this morning. It's documented elsewhere in the agreement. The money you've spent on. Is in the amended agreement. It's specifically identified as land structures, rights of way, et cetera. And administrative and legal costs, $105,633. That's a real specific number. Because it's the actual cost you incurred to acquire the building. Including all of your closing costs. So all of this conversation you just had. About the building not counting towards your match is not true. The building counts toward the match. You've already met that obligation. The 20,122, same. All of that is baked into the agreement. It's documented upfront. EDA acknowledged it from the time we applied through today. And other special award conditions that relate to the building itself are also retained in the change. So you have already met $125,745 of your matching funds obligation. You only have about 91,000 left to meet. The issue with SAC 22 was that the LS Networks work that was done under Comm Structure. Was done as part of our bi-annual request for qualifications. And that work was awarded to Comm Structure clear back in 2018. When they started doing the design of the middle mile. And then we retained Comm Structure because they had so much intimate knowledge about the city and broadband. To do the design of the EDA build out. knowledge about the city and broadband, to do the design of the EDA build out. And when the EDA looked at that post-award, they said, "Your bi-annual request for qual meets state and local procurement requirements, but it doesn't meet federal." And so we had to remove the architectural and engineering costs from the scope of the award. That's why that was de-scoped. But the offsetting source of revenue is the Oregon Broadband Office BTAP, Broadband Technical Assistance Program. We just raised it to $150,000, which you can apply for. And business Oregon always allows retroactive costs that have been incurred, as long as they document them in your application as eligible expenditures. And that's in the handbook, it was published in October of 2022. We regularly do business Oregon grant agreements with pre-agreement costs incurred. So, you will be able, as long as you apply and continue with the project, to bring in that 150,000. And if you document eligible expenditures, the administrative committee that reviews that award can approve those eligible costs, and restore that funding to the city. In addition to that grant, which hasn't been released, you're a year behind schedule. The technical program has been published, but the NOFO has not been released. But in addition to that grant, the Cyber Mill nonprofit just received an award for another $113,000 for the Cyber Mill building, and the FY24 congressionally-directed spending request had $750,000 for the Cyber Mill building. So you guys have about $1 million in awarded grant funds for the Cyber Mill building, between the EDA, the congressionally-directed spending, the HAG bill that was just approved, and your cost recovery from the BTAP grant. You have 1.8 million from the EDA, of which you met $125,000 of your match. This is much ado about nothing. Now, the reality is, you do have a cash deficit, and you won't have a cash deficit on your books until you apply for that grant. If you need a funding partner to carry you, because you can't carry the cash deficit, talk to R3. It's why we created it. I'm sure they'll work with you. But I don't think you need to panic about what's happening with the grant. All of this is programmed. All of this was designed, all of this in the special award conditions. The answer to your question, Chris, who approved the amendment, it was you. This was brought to the council back in May, and the amendment was signed by Rick Allen, after attending a Grant County Digital meeting where we discussed all of this. And then you subsequently passed the resolution that we drafted for you to authorize the city to apply for the additional funds. None of this is new information. So, I don't know why we're discussing it at 8:00 AM on a Friday. I don't know why you set Nick Decotti up for failure. I don't know why none of the people at the table, or any of the people on the call, actually called me and asked for this information, but it didn't happen. I would have been happy to tell you. So, I do think it would be important for you to take a few minutes to regroup, and all breathe a sigh of relief and calm down. And if carrying that cash deficit on your books for a few more months, until you get the funding from the broadband offices not in the best interest of the city, talk to R3 and see if they'll cash flow you. I mean, there's a lot of ways you can get through this. You're in, what is this, October? We've got many more months until the fiscal year ends. I think you could probably resolve it before the end of the fiscal year, but none of this that you're discussing today was unexpected or unanticipated. We've talked about it for months in our Grant County District Board meetings.
So, Mike, with the other parties that are involved with Grant County Digital.
So, hey, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear you. Did you have something for me?
Eric, I'm talking to Nick. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, is Nick done?
I asked him a question about the cash flow issue being the three different parties' cash flow issue, not just the city or the counties.
Okay, I couldn't hear the question. Thanks.
The, the funding from DAS was to build Middle Mile. That funding is expended, because we completed Middle Mile. You have gig fiber now in Seneca, you have gig fiber now in Long Creek. What I don't know is Monument. So, under the terms of our agreement with Rowley, we had a half million, a half million dollar loan. And the interest on the loan is due at the end of this year, if Monument doesn't have gig fiber. So, you're within about two months. If they don't have gig fiber lit in Monument, Seneca, John Day, and Long Creek by the end of this year, then they owe you interest on that half million dollar loan. Rowley does. That's part of the agreement that we all signed with Rowley. So you have cost recovery there. Rowley's also going to sign an operating agreement with the broadband lease, which is going to bring passive income into the city. You're not building a $2 million network to sit there. They're going to be servicing customers on that network, and they're going to lease the network from you. They want to do it 20 years. And they can prepay a portion of that lease agreement, as long as the network ends up operational. So, I, I think you really need to take the time to, to kind of regroup and figure out, you've got agreements with Rowley, the interest that's going to be tearing about 45 days. If they don't complete the build-out to Monument, I don't know if they have or not. They were having pole attachment issues the last time I talked to them. So, if they have, then that interest comes to you, and, and then they'll be paying interest on that loan until they're finished. So there's this source of revenue. If you want to work with R3 to help cash flow, I think that's also an option, until the Oregon BTAP funding comes in. But the assumptions that costs that have been incurred aren't already documented in the agreement, it's not true. It's in the agreement. It's, it's been known from the very beginning. So, the only delta we're dealing with is the 90,000, because of the way that COM Structure was pre. I don't think that's really that big a deal, but I understand that it's not fun to have a negative cash balance. The other thing I think we need to realize is, because the DAS agreement was for Middle Mile, John Day was the applicant for the EDA grant, because that's just the build-out of John Day. You, as a council, applied for the funding. You, as a city, were awarded the grant. You, as a city, applied for the change order, or the amendment, number one, and that was signed by your interim city manager after being presented to you. The build-out of John Day with EDA's grant is not a Grant County Digital Fund project, and it's not a House Built 5006 funded project. That's an us-funded project, because we wanted fiber to our residents. And that's why we were the applicant. So, that isn't Grant County Digital's deficit. That is John Day's deficit, for John Day's network. The only piece of that network that goes outside of the city limits was the run to the courthouse. And the courthouse, at least the last time I talked to him, and I know Eric's worked in this, they were potentially willing to pay for a portion of that run, if they in fact decided to build it, using their ARPA funds. However, if the county's not willing to pay for the match, don't build the line. Keep that money. They're not going to pay their share. Build it. Pull that scope out and repurpose that money within the city. The other component is the run of the fiber all the way up to the industrial park and to the new treatment plant. But as, as part of that run to the industrial park, they had designed the line to extend to the airport. The county doesn't want to cost share with you, don't make the run to the airport. That isn't in the city limits, it's not our building. County wants fiber to the airport, they can help pay for it.
If that's in the grant, do we have to change that in the grant if we don't fulfill it?
Yeah, you, you would just do another change order to de-scope it. And that's why, where you're at right now with the broadband project, LS Networks has now given you a full design, ready to go out with that bid packet. But we have to have your surveyor come back and re-legally describe the, the network, because we've made a few adjustments to the route. So, once Mike Springer is asked to do that, and can rerecord the legal description, all we need is Joe Hitz is the engineer, and Jeremy is your attorney, to sign off that the legal description accurately, accurately reflects the rights of way where you plan to build the network. They'll let you go out for bid, and you can start getting the cost recovery. I mean, you're literally at the finish line. So, the delta that you have to deal with is $90,000. That's the remaining match, and everything else is already codified in the agreement. The 90,000 can come from Oregon BTAP, but you do need to apply. And I wrote some notes on here for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all that information, Mr. Green.
All right. Eric, do you have anything to add, or will we move on?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Nick.
So, when Eric and I were on the phone with EDA on Wednesday, I think it was pretty blatantly clear, and Eric, you can back me up here, that any costs incurred before April 20th, 2022 would not be eligible to be reimbursed. And the only way the building would be reimbursable, according to Mr. Moore from EDA, was if it had been purchased after April of '22, because of the removing of the pre-award cost SAC from the contract.
Documented elsewhere in the agreement. I talked to Richard this morning.
Hold, hold on, hold on. I don't want to get into a debate with Nick Green here.
With Nick Green.
Okay, Eric, and you, Eric, just, you have a Grant County Digital meeting coming up next week, correct?
Uh, we've, I, I, I haven't received any announcement. There's been some discussion about having one, but I'm waiting for somebody, the, the chair, I suppose, or, or Dan, to, you know, solidify it. But we've got something, you know, tentative. It has to be a public meeting, it has to be noticed, it has to be recorded. And typically, Grant County Digital has always done their meetings online exclusively, which made recording easy. We have to be prepared to capture minutes. And I just, I mean, there's ways to do it, but we, we, I want to make sure that that's all hammered out. As a representative, as the city's representative of Grant County Digital, if we're going to have a, a quorum and a meeting, it has to be done correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
So. I'm not, I'm not done yet.
Okay, but Dan also has something to add. Who wants to go? I'm gonna let Dan go first, Eric, and then I'm gonna let you.
Okay, well, I, I'll wrap up after Dan, if, if you're going to continue the discussion.
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Just, just real quick, I did send out a notice of this meeting. This room is booked. There will be all the, the legal requirements, and it will be on Tuesday at 5:30.
This coming Tuesday?
Yes, and I sent that out yesterday. But, you know, the, the one last thing I want to say here is that I was not notified of this meeting at all. And this has been, since this last two weeks, it's been going on. It's like, I thought we had good communication, but I thought it would be germane to have someone here from Grant County Digital Network. And yet, none of us found out about it till last night, when the public had seen it and asked us what was going on. So, I didn't want to come here at 8:00 in the morning, but here I am. So, thank you.
Okay, so next Tuesday, 5:30, is Grant County Digital's meeting.
Here.
And it's here?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. If you can send me your agenda, I will post it on our website as well.
Right, okay.
Because I tried to, I mean, I've been posting R3 stuff, and I would like to keep posting Grant County Digital stuff as well. I know you have a website too, but it is nice to have it on our site too, also. And you have somebody who's going to do minutes and agendas and everything like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Eric, go ahead.
So, I appreciate the comments, and, and I understand that Nick Green's background information is ultimately going to be very helpful for us. We're just not quite there yet. We have to see for ourselves what the facts are. And the reason is because what Nick Decotti just pointed out. I was on the call, the, the EDA grant manager specifically said, specifically contradicted what Mr. Green, Nick Green, just said in council. So, that's where we're at. And we have to make sure that we understand what the truth is. And we can't just take one person's word for it. We have to verify. And we have to look at the accounts. And with all due respect, Nick Green is a tremendous, very skilled person when it comes to doing this kind of work, but he's just one person. And he's no longer in a position where he has firsthand knowledge of what's going on. So, and what I mean by that, I mean by meetings that current city staff are participating in. So, it's incumbent upon us, and it's incumbent upon us, to make sure we understand, and we see where the money is, we verify where the money is, where it's going, and is it going to a priority that this council sees fit to move forward with? And what are the consequences if we do or don't? And that's a lot of information. So, we continue to have some, some differences of opinion about what the facts are, but the bank accounts don't lie. And when somebody from EDA tells me something is not eligible for reimbursement, it's pretty hard for me to stand behind somebody else who just comes in the room and says, "Oh, yes, it is." So, I just want to leave it there. And if that upsets somebody, I'm sorry, but I am going to deliberately peel this onion back and make sure we understand everything until we're done. And I want to move on from this issue at this point.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Yeah, let's, let's don't really leave this.
Okay, council?
I'd like, can I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's been a lot of specific, specific assumptions made on this memo, but it's been said they've only had one week to investigate. How can you make those assumptions without talking to all those people involved, all of them? Who brought this concern up in the first place? Was it Eric? Or was it Nick? Or was it our lawyer?
It was neither. It was Rob, who was looking at, trying to start looking at our financials, because that's what he is paid to do, and he's trying to figure out where this money was being spent and sent.
I get so sick and tired of, again, here we are, arguing over something that not everybody's at the table. What's wrong with bringing everybody to the table and saying, "Okay, let's discuss it," instead of making assumptions? No, we're already having people accusing people of stuff.
Okay, well, I didn't mean, nobody's trying to come across accusatory. We're really just trying to.
It wasn't?
Okay, well, I don't feel like anybody's trying to be accusatory.
Eric wasn't accusing somebody of something?
Okay.
And Nick?
We're not going to have that kind of a discussion, but that is why.
So, so I want to clarify, just so, just so Chris understands, I wasn't accusing anybody of anything. What I'm saying is, you have one person saying one thing, and then you have the person in charge of the project from the federal government saying something completely different. So, that's a fact. That is a fact. It's firsthand. I was, I've been in this meeting, and I was in that one, so, so was Nick Decotti. It's a fact. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but what we need to do is, we need to make sure we understand moving forward. This is simply an update to the council on where we're at right now. We felt it was important enough to bring it to the council. There's no decisions to be made. The situation will continue to develop. And is, to, to answer, I, I think the mayor was doing a good job answering Chris's question about why this was brought up. I think, as we move forward with this grant, first of all, the council's guidance to me was to be the city's representative on Grant County Digital. And if you want me to do that, great. If you don't, that's fine too. But I'm not going to make recommendations to the council that, on things that I don't understand, and I don't understand the risks to the city right now. And when I do, then I can make a good recommendation. But right now, this is just information for the council, and one way or another, we're going to have to pay somebody to manage this grant. And right now, we have Nick Decotti doing it. That's all.
Mayor.
Yeah, Chantel, I see your hand raised. Go ahead. Hold on just a second, Nick.
I'm sorry, I got kicked out of the meeting, and I didn't hear whether you guys were taking public comments or questions on this. So, if you aren't, I apologize.
No, you're good. You're on, I mean, you're the Cyber Mill Board, so if you would like to make a comment, please do.
It's actually just a question. I keep hearing Nick and Eric saying that EDA said that it's not eligible for reimbursement, which is one thing, but Nick Green was saying that it is eligible for match. So, is there a chance that it's eligible for match, but not eligible for reimbursement? And that's the, the clarity issue here?
No, Chantel, it's neither eligible as a match or a reimbursement. If it was eligible to be match, it would be eligible to be reimbursed. The issue is about the period with which the cost was incurred. It was incurred within the pre-award cost period between April 21 and April '22, and that was SAC number 22 that was removed from the grant contract.
Thank you. I just heard different terms and wanted to make sure.
No, that's a good question. Thank you, Chantel. Yeah, hold on. Okay, so I have one more question in the audience, and then is council good with moving on after that comment? Okay, go ahead. Nick Green?
I, I would like the council, if you're willing, can we just call Richard Moore? Just call him up. Let's call him right now. We'll put him on speakerphone, because this community thrives on rumor and innuendo, and this is going to go everywhere, and everybody's going to talk about it. Can we please just call him? Let's call him and have him answer the question. I'm willing to do that, because he's the program minister at the. Let's call him and have him answer the question. I'm willing to do that, because he's the program minister at the end of the day. Let's call him right now and ask him.
What if we have Grant County Digital Board have him be at their next meeting and Grant County Digital Board?
You can do it that way too, but I guarantee if you call him right this minute, he'll tell you that the building counts. Good. And I've got him on speakerphone if you want to talk to him.
Okay, let's, Dan, can we have that on your agenda? I think it would be good for your board to handle that.
Um, sure.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, are we good? Okay, um, local government investment pool account access. Rob, we've moved on. Rob, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me? I can't hear. Okay, I'm, I'm on here.
Thank you. Go ahead and discuss what this resolution is for and why.
I'm sorry, you guys keep cutting out on audio. I apologize. I clearly missed something there. So, right now, we just need someone, actually two people, to have access to the LGIP account. Currently, no one on the city's payroll has access to LGIP right now. Um, the city's general primary checking account is down to $30,000 in it, and last pay run was $202,000. So, we're gonna need to use some of those LGIP funds to, uh, support operations.
Heather, nobody can hear you.
This is why we need those microphones. Even though it's gonna cost $400, this is why we need those microphones.
But that's not the issue. It's something, when people chime, like, when people log in and then they log out, it messes up with the audio, because I've been even rewatching prior meetings, and it does it. Can you hear me now?
I can.
I can too, thank you.
So, the reason behind a resolution versus minutes, which is how we've always done it prior, is because of the timeframe that we have. Rob, Rob had given me last weekend, said, I need to get, we normally would have minutes at the next meeting, and then have them approved at the end of the month, but we can create this resolution to give this authorization so that it can be done immediately. That was the main reason for this important meeting topic today, was this part of it. Um, and then, so I, this resolution just maps out Rob Gaslin, and then Shirley would be our two that are, she's our security specialist that is temporary in that position for three months, and reassess when she's done with her. Well, that is where we're at right now. Any questions?
Yes.
Heather, can I make a comment?
Hold on just a second.
The resolution also includes the mayor and/or council president. Why can't it just be Gaslin and Manca? Why does it have to be the mayor and/or the city council president?
We can take that on if you guys would like. We need at least two, right, Rob?
Uh, well, I, I, I guess we have to have at least two people to auth, or to be able to transfer funds. That's a, that's an LGIP requirement. But I think your question is, who needs to sign it? And I, I'm going with, we need the board approval, and so ever, whoever can represent the board in discussing this with LGIP, because they're the ones who are ultimately gonna have to take this resolution and turn it into access for, for myself and Shirley.
Yeah, and I'll just add some clarification. The resolution does not grant, uh, the mayor and council president, uh, access to the account, per se. It only authorizes or provides access to Gaslin, uh, and our employees. So, I'm, I'm not sure where the misunderstanding is coming from. The revocation language, however, is a bit different, and that's for administrative efficiency.
Jeremy, this is Chris again. I'm reading right from the resol, I'm reading right from the resolution. It authorized to take all necessary and appropriate actions to effect and carry out the intent of this resolution, and the mayor and/or.
Chris, you're, you're misreading, with all due respect, you're misreading the resolution. I, I'd encourage you to look at the first sentence. The first sentence reads, "The council hereby approves and authorizes Corporation, Gaslin, and Manca to have access to the account. Does not identify anyone else." The language, uh, to which you're referring just allows them, the identified individuals, including the mayor and the council president, to submit whatever documents are necessary to enable the access to Gaslin and Manca. So, so, with all due respect, again, the resolution does not accomplish what you think it does.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Heather, can I further clarify?
Yes, go ahead, Chantel.
Okay, um, as the person who's probably added and removed the most people from the City of John Day's LGIP over the last four years, I want to clarify that there's different levels of permission you can give individuals. So, when you are adding a contact to the LGIP account, you can either give them permission to view, or access, in this term, the account, which means that you can view statements, and that is all. Or you can allow them to initiate transactions, or you can allow them to make wire transfers, or you can allow them to open and close new accounts, or you can allow them to be a person who manages the permissions, which means the person who add or removes people from being able to do any of those transactions. So, I would think that the resolution could use some clarification, that you are making sure that both the mayor and the council president have the authority to manage the permissions and add and remove those people to the account, or that you are allowing the, um, Manca and, and Gaslin to not just view and access, but also initiate transactions, because if you present this resolution as documentation to LGIP showing why these people have the authority, they won't accept that, um, the way that it's written, because it specifically says that those people are only allowed access. It doesn't say that they're allowed to make transactions and what kinds of transactions.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate the feedback. Uh, I'll just, uh, add that we actually spoke to, uh, LGPI, and this is exactly what they asked for, without any further clarification or request of specificity. With that being said, uh, if there is additional language that you all would like to see, we can certainly add it, uh, and have the resolution approved with those modifications. But again, uh, we spoke right with the source, and this is exactly what they requested. I'd also point out that historical practice for councils and, and what have you is not in a motion to have a delineation of all the levels of review and access and what have you. That is not the case, and so it would be a bit unique to go and include that type of specificity in a resolution like this.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? If anybody would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 23907-07, a resolution of the City of John Day approving and authorizing certain individuals to have access to the city's local government investment pool account.
Sheri makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I can second that.
Ron, seconds. All in favor of approving Resolution 23-907-07, a resolution of the City of John Day approving and authorizing certain individuals to have access to city's local government investment pool account, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seven to zero.
Heather, just one more, Heather, if I may, one point, uh, of clarification. I noticed that the resolution that was posted had some blanks, uh, so we're gonna need to, uh, include or fill in those blanks. So, I assume that it looks like they're administrative of nature, such as the blank in the first recital, as well as identifying the appropriate resolution in Section 1.
Okay.
Sheri indicated those in the resolution number and read it by Kyle Longley.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, who, since, can Rob, since he's, who's gonna need to attest this? Who will sign it as the attest?
Uh, you know, technically, the city recorder in past practice has signed it. Um, honestly, it's more of an administrative function than anything else. I'd suggest that Rob sign it, because he has been appointed as the, uh, city recorder at this time.
Okay, I just didn't know with it, authorizing him, if I needed to have something else to have him sign it.
No, I don't think so. I think you've already vested, uh, Rob with that authority by virtue of the approval of his appointment, uh, months ago.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Jeremy. All right, so moving on, um, select an election official. Dave had this added.
Currently, the city does not have an election official listed with the state of Oregon. There's a recall petition. It's about to be circulated, but it can't, it can't continue until we have an election official, because it's a city election, not a county election. So, it doesn't fall on the county's responsibility. It falls on the city's responsibility. And, uh, in the past, it's either been the city manager or the city recorder. We have neither right now. So, this is information I got from Rob. Gaslin, yeah. Uh, in talking with the state, because the state sent the stuff to the city. So, we need to appoint an election official. And I spoke with Rob. He says he does not want that position. It's not within his contract. We don't have a city recorder. Next closest person would be Shirley or Savannah. Savannah's doing, according to Rob, a lot of the city recorder work. Possibly would have more time available to deal with it than Shirley, knowing Shirley's workload. So, basically, one of those two people we need to appoint as the election officials so that we can deal with what's going on right now.
May I ask why you can't do it?
Uh, Jeremy highly recommended that a counselor did not do it. And.
Dave, if, if I may, in a perfect world, it would be nice not to have a council member serve in that capacity. Uh, but if necessary, of course, that is, that is an appointment that could be made. And then alternatively, there is the ability to petition and request the county's assistance as well.
Yeah, personally, I didn't want to be involved in the recall effort. And I didn't want to be a counselor that had to be dealing with it. So, city staff is normally the person that would be doing it. So, I just felt city staff, we have city staff capable of doing it, so that was my recommendation.
I am not comfortable with the current city staff handling this. I would rather petition the county to go ahead and handle it then.
Hold on. Please wait to be called on. We're letting council deliberate right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. Jeremy, I was asking, because I talked with Jeremy about this, and I was asking some legal questions on it. He said he'd get back to me. Um, unfortunately, I never did get an email back from him, so I don't know what he found out. Did you find out anything, Jeremy, on the couple of questions you had?
Yeah, a, and so I, I guess, Dave, I'm sharing, knowing that we were having the council meeting today, uh, I figured we would have this, this dialogue. Regardless, uh, yeah, so we can go and petition the county and ask them to serve, for lack of a better expression, uh, as our de facto county elections official, if you will. At least, that's what the statutes appear to provide. Uh, I've not gone through that process before, because, uh, frankly, most of the cities have had staff that were capable of doing it. And again, you have the ability to designate, designate a council member in the alternative. So, those are your three options.
But the county doesn't have to accept it, even if we petition, they can refuse, correct?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know if that's necessarily the case. I, theoretically, I guess you could get some, some pushback on that. But, but I look at it this way. Practically speaking, the county is gonna want to ensure that, um, these types of matters are dealt with or handled properly as well. There's a vested interest or a mutual vested interest in ensuring proper procedure and protocol. So, I, I honestly would be surprised if they weren't accommodating.
Did you, wait, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Rob, you still on the line?
Yeah, he is.
Yes, I am. Dave, I'm, I'm so sorry. You guys cut out again on the audio.
We'll cut out.
I just got audio back. I just got audio back seconds ago. You're, uh, this is ridiculous. Your audio's out again. I apologize.
Rob, I will text you.
Are you doing that?
Yes.
Jeremy, what, what role does the election play?
Chris, I'm sorry. I only heard part of that question.
What role does the election official play?
Uh, it's essentially, uh, administrative in nature. Uh, they're going to receive and process. Uh, it, well, obviously, it depends upon what is being presented to the elections official, but it is administrative, not very labor-intensive whatsoever.
Okay, what are the specific duties?
Uh, I'd have to pull up the statute and, and outline those for you, Chris. I do not have those in front of me. But essentially, it is receiving the petition, ensuring that the requisite signatures have been received and signed, uh, and then it is certifying and sending it off to the county. I mean, that is in a global 10,000-foot level nutshell.
Is there somebody looking over their shoulder to verify the signatures?
No, not usually. I'm not aware of that.
So, only one person does that, even at the county level?
I don't know how the county processes or how they deal with that internally. I can just tell you, from the city's perspective, it is more or less just ensuring, again, timelines, dates, uh, have been met per state statute, ensuring the requisite number of signatures, and then certifying it to the county.
Thank you.
Yep.
They don't certify signatures.
Okay, so, Rob, do you want to answer Dave's question?
Was that the question you texted me? I'm, I'm beginning to wonder if it's me, if it's my phone or something. Is everybody else losing audio as well when, when someone's trying to talk to me? Yeah, I am too.
Jeremy, yes, I am too.
Yeah, it sounds like everybody's losing it too. I apologize. Is council trying to talk right now?
No.
You want to try again? Sorry. Okay, maybe you guys can hear me. I, I can't hear you. Um, so, the question. Okay, so, the question was, did, did I talk to the county? The answer is no.
Thank you. We're gonna do sign language today. Um, okay. Uh, we have a couple of questions in the audience. Charlene, state your city and name, please.
Charlene Morris, Charlene Morris, six, one, six, currently, twenty-six, John Day. I think that there is a conflict of interest between, or between all of the council members and the city staff, and I think you should definitely. And I think you should definitely, to ensure that there's no issues, petition the county clerk to take this matter over. There's nobody in the county, in the city, that's actually qualified to take care of this matter. You all have a conflict of interest, and you should all recuse yourself.
Did you have?
Hi, just.
State your city name, please.
Judy Shudy, John Day. I've spoken a couple of times with Brenda Percy. Again, this would be, before you make a decision, call her up. Ask her your questions, so you hear it right from the person's mouth. This is a very, very minimal procedure for whoever does it. I don't, I agree with, mostly with Charlene. I don't think it should be anybody on the council. I am confused as to why you refer now to Mr. Gaslin repeatedly as the city recorder. So I don't understand why he isn't the person that is going to do this. That would be a function of his. But what this involves is you make sure that your heading meets the 200-word requirement. Using the word "certifying signatures" is really misleading. You need to have that clarified, so that there's not a doubt in anybody's mind. And Brenda Percy's the one to do that. You didn't want that information when it was readily available a few minutes ago. I don't know why you don't call her up right now and ask that question, so that you can make a good decision.
Well, I have no problem with having the county do it, if the county's willing to do it. To me, that would be the simplest and easiest way to go, until we get a city manager and we can redo things in the future, but. Can we put her on speakerphone?
I agree with you.
I actually would like to see us move with the county. This is, they do it all the time. They're familiar with it. They know Heather. Cross all the Ts and dot the Is.
And I understand why Heather's not speaking much on this.
Yeah, no.
She needs to know.
Yeah.
Because it does involve her.
Right.
So I guess I'll try and just kind of take over the process. I think that's what she was wanting me to do. So consensus to contact the county and see if they'll do this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. I don't know. Do we need a motion, Jeremy, or just a consensus?
Oh, you know, under the circumstances, just have a motion made, so there's no confusion whatsoever.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we petition the Grand County Court to.
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office to handle this petition.
Who's going to do that?
Why don't you allow, why don't you allow our office to contact the county? We can, we can place a phone call, and then we can submit a letter or an email request as well, but that would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we have our legal counsel contact the city clerk to. I'm sorry?
County clerk.
To the county clerk, excuse me, to move forward on this petition.
There's not a petition.
Or that, to move forward on.
A request.
A request to handle this recall petition.
Second.
I'm going to recuse myself as a conflict of interest from this vote.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Appreciate, appreciate the direction, council, and I just did look at the statute and our memorandum, and it does look like the county has no legal obligation to accept the petition. But again, I do believe this is the appropriate course of action, and I will send Heather and Dave an email, or perhaps the entire council, next week with the results of our attempt.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Jeremy, what's our timeline on this? How fast do we need to act?
Well, immediately. So from my standpoint, the sooner the better. So we'll make that contact today or Monday.
So what happens if they turn us down? We hold a special meeting?
Yep, then you all should probably hold another special meeting and make a designation internally.
Do you recommend that we do that ahead of time?
Ah, I mean, you could, but honestly, to some extent, I guess this is a public meeting, and the county is going to be aware of this. But if you do so, then then you're, I mean, I'd rather ask the county now to to assume that role, because we're not in a position to appoint elsewhere, rather than make a secondary appointment, because I would be concerned that if you've already made that appointment, not that the county would do this, but they could say, well, you have somebody else who's willing to do it, and therefore, there's no need for us to do it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and we don't really have anybody qualified at this time. The state did offer to train that person on what they needed to do, but it would, it would behoove us, and I think the city would be more than happy to probably cover any costs incurred by the clerk's office. I don't think there'll be much, but there might be a small, small cost that would be associated with it.
Would you like me to offer, which, council, would you like me to offer that up? As being, you know, part of the, the understanding that the city would subsidize their costs?
I would be willing to.
Wouldn't I have a problem with that? Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I would rather have somebody with.
Yeah, I think there's a consensus. That's fine, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being on the line, Jeremy.
Excuse me, the clerk's office closes. And the county clerk is usually not in on Friday.
Charlene just informed us that the clerk's office closes at two.
Noon.
At noon, and that. Is not usually there on Friday.
Okay. Appreciate the information.
All right, Purple Pipe update.
Can you take a quick?
Absolutely.
Me the same thing.
Cherry, some.
There, you sure?
Hold on, you gotta wait till we're all here.
This is just a personal question.
No.
Brenda just commented that she's in Wildcat.
Pardon?
Brenda just commented that she's in Wildcat.
Oh, Brenda just commented that she is in, at the courthouse today. Okay, great. Thank you. Did you hear that, Jeremy?
I did. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Was it a good homecoming?
It was a good homecoming. Girls are playing right now as we speak.
They lost 3-0.
They lost.
They lost 3-0.
So we're done.
No, we're, we're consolation.
We lost 3-0. Three, oh, dang it.
Thanks, Sharon.
Dave, just so you know, Brenda commented on the Facebook slide, here she is in the office, so we let Jeremy, she is in the office alone, so.
So you still with us, Jeremy?
Yep.
I am, Dave.
Okay, because I'll have a question for you on this update. I'm just waiting for one of the counselors to get back in here.
That sounds good. Update on what, Dave? I'm sorry.
Um, well, it has to do with our water reuse pipe, what they call the Purple Pipe, and a potential easement, and a property owner's request on. What's the word I'm looking for? Stipulations for the easement.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to open the meeting back up. All counselors are back at 9:21, so we are back. So Dave, go ahead.
Okay, so one of the issues that we ran into a while back was the negotiations for this Purple Pipe to go up to the golf course and the sewer line to come down through that same easement to service the Rush Young subdivision up there by the golf course. The person, the property that the easement's going through, part of the stipulation was he was going to get on city water, or he's already on city water, but he was going to get some Purple Pipe water when that came into play, but he was also going to connect to the city sewer. And in exchange for that, he was going to do a lot line adjustment around his property, so that his house and basically a residential lot were annexed into the city limits. One of his stipulations was that he wanted the city to pass an ordinance to allow him to still hunt on his property that's been annexed into the city and shoot his guns, target practice, whatever. I told him I didn't think the city could do that. We were supposed to have you check into this for us before, but I don't think anyone ever followed through with it. I believe that's a state law, and we can't override that. So I guess that's my question to you, Jeremy.
Yeah, and so I believe I have looked at this before, and I can give you an off-the-cuff, and then I will, I will just caution the off-the-cuff with the fact that I will need to confirm and verify after, after the council meeting. But I believe I've looked at this issue before, and you are generally correct. However, I do believe that the city has the ability to provide limited authorization for hunting inside the city limits. So that option may exist. Again, it's going to be fact and circumstance based, but I don't know of a blanket prohibition that would disallow the city from doing that if, in fact, the city determined, and the council in this, in this situation, it to be in the city's benefit.
Okay, could you get that information?
Yep.
As soon, as soon as possible?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. That was, that was my main question to you. So update for the council. Met with HECO. Casey requested that I meet with them, because I have a lot of knowledge of the infrastructure and stuff that they're going to be dealing with, laying this new system in, this water reuse system. They're at a point that they need to finish the design. All the surveying, engineering, all that stuff. They need to get it done in the fairly near future because of the grant, and the timeline on the grant, the construction has to be completed by sometime next year. I believe that was what they told me, anyway. So there's some issues. One of the issues is, is we have not successfully negotiated terms with. Parson, yes, Ty, Ty Parsons. So we, in order to run the Purple Pipe up to the golf course and bring the sewer down from Jack, or Rush Young subdivision up there, that easement is essential. So we need the council to, and you don't have to make the decision today. This is an added thing, so technically, we can't. But this needs to be put on the agenda for next meeting, because we have some decisions to make. And so I'm just putting those up ahead of time. So one is, we need to finish the negotiations with Ty. That's going to be dependent on Jeremy. Ty indicated that if any of his conditions could not be met, that he wasn't going to be interested. That was in the original meeting with him. That may change, that may not. I don't know. It may be that we don't run Purple Pipe to the golf course up that route. And it may be that Rush Young has to negotiate an easement for the sewer line down through his property. I don't know any of these things, okay, until we talk to Ty. So we need, we need to authorize somebody to negotiate with Ty, whether you want a counselor involved, public works director involved, whatever. But we need to be able to give them the authorization. Then we need to, so that's one of the main things, because they can't finish the design if they don't know where it's going. Then there's some potential, because this is a year farther out than originally. There's some potential that the grant, because of costs going up, that the grant won't fund full extensions where they're currently recommended. Now, we can cut some costs, because originally, Seventh Street extension was going to wind around up towards the North Hill, above the Percolation Ponds, and then swing back around and da-da-da. Since then, it's been changed, the route's been changed more direct to follow what currently exists as the dirt road.
Right.
So that's going to cut some footage costs. They were going to have to follow the trail, the curvature and everything along the trail. We talked to them, no design to follow the road. That's going to be the simplest, the best access for maintenance in the future, potentially keep it out from under the edge of the pavement, but follow the roadway. So that's, that'll help cut some costs. But if there's not enough to complete the full project at this time, then the council needed, needs to decide which ends they want to cut. So in the thought process for that, it's what's the most beneficial for the use of the water, who's most likely to actually buy the water from us, rather than the free use part of it, so that we get some cost recovery, and it happens like our original intention was. So those are some things that we have to think about. But we have to be able to give that information to HECO here. I asked him if we could wait till we got our new city manager on board, so the city manager could take care of this stuff. They said absolutely, two months is way too long out. So I told him I would bring it up at this meeting, and they are more than willing to zoom in on that with us and explain some of the issues. But we do need to make some decisions on it, so that they have something to go on.
So between now and then, can you give me whatever documentation you want me to provide to council and sort for background, so that we add it to the agenda for next meeting, for sure? So like, maybe the original agreement with Ty?
Yeah, we should have that.
We have that, and then what else do you want me to add?
Should be up at City Hall. Just put HECO, I can get the.
Just email me whatever you want.
I was going to say, just put, just put HECO on the.
HECO update for the pipe.
Yeah. One other thing Rob did, or Ron. I, I forget his first name. Anyway, from HECO, one of the guys that's. He said that potentially, this project could get to a point, he goes, he doesn't think it's there. But it might get to a point, if things aren't flowing in the timeline that they need to be flowing, that we may need somebody to just manage that portion of it. And.
Like a project manager?
Yeah, kind of, but not, not necessarily a full-scope project manager, just to make sure that. Just to make sure that the timelines and the things are, are being thought of and taken care of. And he said he could do that under a separate contract or a set fee if we get to the point where we need that to happen.
Okay.
So he was just throwing that out there. So that's another thing, you know, that we can think about in the future.
Okay.
So that's basically the update.
Just got a quick question for you. Rush Young subdivision.
Yes.
Did the city promise sewer and water to the subdivision?
Um, I'm not sure.
I, I don't think he would build it if he wasn't, didn't have that.
Well, our development stuff is typically the contractor would put in the service, especially outside the city limits. So they would install the sewer line. The cost of that installation of that sewer line would be used to go against the system development charges that would be tacked on to all the different lots. So that's, that's the way it was set up and designed. So if the city pays for the sewer line to go in, then we also get the system development charges for each of those lots. I believe there's 10.
I think so.
I believe there's 10 lots up there. That stuff all has to be still worked out, Chris.
It still hasn't been?
No, that's a completely separate issue. That's not the purple pipe issue.
I know, I know, but...
That's a separate issue with that subdivision and there was an agreement or a letter of intent or something that the council was presented and discussed. I'm not exactly sure where everything's at on that. A lot of this stuff is going through the holes because we don't have anybody managing, managing all of it.
I just want to make sure that we don't lose the subdivision because of purple pipe.
Well, we don't want to lose the subdivision, but if we can't, we don't have any money to do it, I guess is my point. On our own without the purple pipe going up through there and the grant from the purple pipe going up through there.
So, but...
And, and we don't know that we can secure the easement yet. I mean, that's all contingent on even securing the easement with Ty.
Could we also, on our next council meeting, maybe have Russ chime in on this and say, hey, how important is this to your subdivision?
I can invite Russ to it.
I think the purple pipe...
Yeah, city water will come in from a different direction.
Not through him?
Not through Ty.
Okay, okay.
Right.
No, it's just, it's just the purple pipe and the purple pipe will service the golf course.
Okay.
And the sewer line that will follow through the same easement is a gravity sewer coming back down to service the subdivision.
I thought the easement was going to go through Ty's place for the sewer water, too.
Not the water.
Not the water, just the sewer.
Just the purple pipe water and the sewer water.
So the sewer will be...
Contingent on the easement.
Yes.
Okay.
And the purple pipe's contingent on the easement. I mean, the only other option would be...
Like carbon or pond?
Would take the purple pipe up and follow the same route that our city water line services the golf course, but...
It's going to cost more.
That's going to cost not only more on the grant money, but it's also going to potentially cost the golf course more to get it what it may need it.
Right.
You know, so that's a discussion, but these discussions...
They would like it on that end where the pond is, correct?
Right.
Makes sense.
That's, yeah, that's the purpose for taking it through there.
Right.
So these discussions eventually will need to take place, but the first thing we've got to do is authorize somebody to do the negotiations for the easement agreement.
Okay.
If we cannot come to an agreement for whatever reason, then we'll have to get the other players involved and discuss with them other options.
Okay. So at next meeting, I will do a HECO update. I will make sure Russ is invited and we will designate a negotiation person for the easements. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, one question?
Yeah. Shannon there, John Day. Just a comment. I would like to remind council that in May, several people came to this council meeting asking for a project manager. It was, a motion was made and approved and voted on unanimously by this council for a project manager. It did not happen. Further in June, when we asked, is that going to happen because the resolution was made? It was stated, no, we don't need to do that because we have Nick DeCotty working on several of our projects. And I said, well, who's going to do the easement negotiation? And the response was that Heather was going to handle the easement negotiations. Here we are in October. We are still dealing with this. Nothing has happened. We've been asked multiple times, the city has been asked by Nick DeCotty, I need help, I need a local contact. We've been told by other people, we need a project manager, we need a local contact. And then, and that was never, that never happened. So now we're talking about all this again, clear on October. This is, in my opinion, it comes back to also Chris's comment about not asking everyone to the table. All of these things are happening with conversations, individual conversations all over the place without asking everybody to the table. I hope that moving, I think it's hugely irresponsible for council to not be doing that. This meeting is an example of being irresponsible and not asking everyone to the table to get questions. You're paying a consultant to do groundwork from the very beginning and you're talking about not having money, but you're spending that extra money to start from scratch on something that if everyone was at the table, it would take a lot less time and save you a lot of money. So I would ask, I hope that this has generated some thought about moving when you move forward to asking every single person to the table. Nick Green, if you think he is wrong, ask him to the table so that you can ask the question and ask if it's wrong. Just cutting somebody out because you don't like them or you think they're wrong or have done something wrong does not mean they shouldn't be at the table twice as much they should be at the table because they should be able to answer those questions. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
I'm John Morris from John Day, 60016 Highway 26, John Day. Purple pipe issue, what is that water going to be used for? If it's to irrigate the golf course, you have to consider that that water, my understanding is going to be 365 days a year. The golf course is not going to want to irrigate during the winter months. It'll be an ice rink. If that pipe breaks or something or has more water than the ground can absorb, it'll run down into our irrigation ditch. And I say ours, the loose long ditch companies. And we have a concern with too much water in the ditch under natural conditions, rainfall and stuff. We can't do maintenance on that ditch. And that's the way it's set up is September 30th to April 1st, we can't irrigate out of that ditch. There's no irrigation rights during that timeframe. So that's one of the things that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, say your city and name, please.
Terry Davison, John Day, Oregon. Broadband, broadband, broadband. We got broadband in Long Creek. We got high-speed broadband in Seneca. I live in the city of John Day. I pay my taxes here in Grand County. I live just up the street. I was assured by the city manager before I built my home that by the end of summer, I would have high-speed broadband. Well, four years later, I have some really weak wireless internet and no broadband. And Rally Networks tells me there's no plan to extend broadband to you. How many millions of dollars have to be spent before I can get the broadband I was promised up at my property here inside the city of John Day? Do I got to move to Seneca to get broadband? I realize this is not the council's problem or the council's issue, but I see a total brick wall. Rally says it's not happening. But yet, before I built my property, I was assured that it would happen. And so that's my issue. It's not the end of the world, but I'm very frustrated.